And let us call meeting hour at 5:00 o'clock and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll and we'll keep an eye out for Councilmember Spitzley. Sherry's having issues. Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Sure.
Councilmember Betts?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here again.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Spitzley. All right, let us let the record reflect that Councilmember Spitzley is not here. Stand by just a second. Sherry's having some issues, hold on. And I don't see the city clerk here either, so. Maybe a short presentation. Before we move on, though, let's go to our minutes, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the August 31st meeting minutes as presented.
Right, it's been moved, is there any discussion about the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the roll, Vice President Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0 for the approval of the minutes. Let me see if Sherry's back in. Right. We're gonna go at ease for about two minutes while I see if I can figure this out with Sherry because she's our timekeeper as well, so don't go away, but if you want to turn your cameras off for just about two minutes, I'll call us back at 5:05.
Thank you.
So you missed the approval of the minutes, they passed without your support, so I'm glad that...
Thank you, sorry.
Very contentious.
I can see.
I'll give everyone just that extra minute I promised, so we'll come back at 5:05. I have watched other municipalities do this and we are still, even with some snafus, doing it better than others, so just... All right, so we are back to order, if folks would please turn their cameras back on. We are to the point of that meeting where the public has an opportunity to address the city council. For those of you who this is your first time, we do ask that you please raise your hands to do this, and you do that on a Mac by pushing Option Y, on a PC by pushing Alt-Y. On your phone, it is star... Nine. Star nine. And then if you don't have any of those options, open up the participants window and there should be a raise hand button there. And as with most of the meetings, we will leave public comment, the raising your hand open until the end of the first speaker, so that I give you three plus minutes to decide if you want to address the council about anything on our, the committee, about anything on our agenda this evening. Again, if you're on a Mac, it's Alt-Y, Option Y, PCs, Alt-Y, and a phone is star nine. All right, so our first speaker is David Fisher. David, you are now able to speak, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may, and if you'd like to turn your camera on, you can also do that, but you don't have to. So as soon as you start speaking, we'll start the timer.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Frandora Hills and I was just wanting to comment on how the neighborhoods seem to be swept up in the redevelopments that are going on and are, we feel like we're being treated as an afterthought here and have been left in the dark pretty much throughout the process. And I'm afraid that rushing through the assessment process here is not gonna accurately calculate or evaluate the runoff of our individual properties and will fall into some kind of cookie cutter calculation that's just more of an allocation than a true understanding of what our properties are contributing. And we can't just look at it as a percentage of impermeability, there's a lot more that goes on with that, like ground cover, gradier property, soil types, there's a lot to factor in here from an engineering standpoint. For instance, my roof would be considered hardscape and impermeable, obviously, but all my downspouts released to my backyard, which has a depressed area, nothing goes to the street, yet I would be assessed for that in a cookie cutter calculation. Really, the only runoff I have to the street is my driveway. And I'm afraid that that's gonna happen to a lot of my neighbors through here and we just want to make sure that this process is fair and understood and based on engineering standards.
Are you all set, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next person I have...
Yep, next up is Dan Decker, and after Dan Decker, we have no more folks with their hands raised, so raise your hand now or forever hold your peace. And then Dan Decker, you, hold on a second. You coming? All right, Dan Decker, you are available, you're able to speak, if you want to unmute yourself, please do so, and if you want to turn your camera on, you can, but you don't have to, and you'll have three minutes to address the committee. Mr. Decker? There you are.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. My name's Dan Decker, I live at 1110 Shelter Lane in the Montgomery Drain District, I'm currently retired. I had a worthwhile conversation with Andy Kilpatrick last week, which helped me to understand the assessment process better, and I thank him for taking his time to do that. It's sort of like the sanitary sewer bills, we all pay each month, you pay for what you put into the drain. However, with, there's no meter on my sanitary sewer or storm sewer on my property, so an estimate has to be made how much I'm adding to the drain and am responsible for personally. With sanitary sewer, that's easy because you figure what comes out of my tap goes into the drain, however, with the storm sewer, it's not as simple. The city has decided to estimate that my individual contribution to the storm sewer is equal to the rain that falls on my roof and driveway, that is the impermeable surfaces on my property, which drain water to the street. For the Montgomery Drain District, the city has estimated that three tenths of my lot is impermeable, that is roof and driveway, and seven tenths is grass, which is permeable. I did a rough calculation myself and I found that that .3, three tenths number is very accurate, so I believe that my personal assessment for the Montgomery Drain is fair. However, looking at the Montgomery Drain District, there are three large parcels which make up about half of the Lansing portion, that is Frandor Shopping Center, Sears, the former Sears parcel, and the Dunham Sparrow Secretary of State portion. The city has judged that 90% of these parcels are impermeable, that is pavement that sends water to the storm sewer. They are being assessed on the basis of having 90% pavement and 10% grass and dirt. That is about 3.2 acres of grass and dirt at Frandor, one and a half acres of grass and dirt at Sears, and one acre of grass and dirt at Dunham's. However, I rode around these parcels yesterday and I sure did not see that much grass and dirt. The Sears and Dunham's parcel are about 99% pavement. Frandor has a few curbs, dividers with plants, but their total permeable is less than 1%. So it's not fair that I am paying for all of the impermeable surface on my lot and paying for the storm water that I send into the drain, but these three commercial properties are not paying their fair share. They are not paying for all of their drained water. They are getting a tax break that I am not, and that's not fair to the residents of Frandor Hills. Therefore, I think it's important that these numbers be revised and that the assessment roll tonight be tabled so that the numbers can be revised and make them more accurate and more fair to all Lansing residents, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we will hear from Dana Reynolds, so we're gonna... Dana Reynolds, you are now able to speak.
I just unmuted, I, for the first time, it's a Zoom meeting, so thank you. We're, we, my husband and I, Rhonda Dana Reynolds, we live at 1103 Shelter Lane, and we are joining our neighbors in the request that you work closely in our neighborhood with us in our neighborhood to explain this project. There are so many questions we have, we just don't understand, and I know that you've already met with your commercial constituents, but we're inviting you to work closely so that we can understand. We suspect that the majority of our neighbors will be absolutely gobsmacked when they get their winter tax assessment, because very few people know about this, what's happening, and so we would just like the opportunity to be preparing our neighbors to have questions answered and are requesting that you, if we could meet with the city council or specific members to tell us exactly what's being proposed, which may be a strange question, but I'm not quite sure it is, we know, and how the assessments are being determined using a detailed calculated assessment of each property, both commercial and residential, and then specifically what work will be done in each area. It's our perception, correct or otherwise, and that's one thing that a meeting would help, is that the amount of benefit to Frandor Hills is not going to be as extensive as it will be to the commercial properties to Frandor. So we would like to be able to compare that work that's being done, so that everybody walks out and feels maybe not good, but not terrible about what's going on. So as taxpayers and constituents, who will be dramatically impacted, really for decades, on this financial commitment, we would really like to know what rationale and assessments will occur for all properties, so we invite you, please, to talk to us, I'm sure we can gather many neighbors to discuss with you and have many questions answered, I'm sure they'll be very happy to learn more about it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of this meeting. The next up is, we will have a presentation from city clerk, this was city clerk Chris Swope, this was requested by several members of council to discuss the absentee ballots, the process for securing our vote for the November election, he promises me no longer than two hours.
Oh, Brian.
Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Hi, sorry about that. Somehow, by office, we have this marked as 5:30 meeting, so Brian is getting on right now with the presentation.
Do you want us to, we can move on to the grants?
If you can skip us and come back to, back to us in a couple minutes.
Not a problem, I think it was originally marked for 5:30 a while back and we changed...
All right, we missed that change, so thank you.
No worries. All right, so actually, the next one is a grant acceptance that the clerk might want to speak to. Nope, we'll move on to the next one, just in case.
I was gonna say, we're just supposed to give him a grant after all of that, he said 5:30.
We'll come back to that one too, but the next one is a resolution, the disposition of city property, transfer of properties administered by the Lansing Housing Commission to the Lansing Housing Commission. If anyone still has questions on this, I think that time has passed, but we'll certainly entertain them, this is just a, we had to pause a few weeks to allow for the change to set, if the lawyers want to tell me how wrong I am or right I am, that's fine, but this is just moving that process along, transferring finally that ownership of those properties to Lansing Housing Commission from the City of Lansing, so I will take a motion of, from Vice President Hussein on this issue.
Sure, so I would move the resolution, disposition of city property, this is the transfer of properties administered by the LHC to the Lansing Housing Commission.
Very good. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember Wood, you have the floor.
Thank you. And then just clarification for the public, whenever we see the fact city property, this is city property in name only. The funds to purchase these properties were purchased with HUD dollars that were applied for by the housing, by the Lansing Housing Commission. The only thing that we have is the fact that they were not able to be owned in their name at the time that these properties were purchased, just so the public understands this, it's, we can't give away something that, other than the fact that our name is on the title, we do not technically own, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. The next hand that I see is Councilmember Brian Jackson, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, I don't know what's going on with my city computer, but I had to switch, so there might be two of me's up there right now. So if you recall, and I appreciate that Councilwoman Wood for your interpretation and information, and I do recall the city attorney and Lansing Housing Commission, Doug Fleming, kinda echoed those same ideas, however, why, one, are we even on the agenda, and why are we even voting if it's not really City of Lansing or in name only, why does council have any say so? And two, if you recall, so I first heard about this when it was announced, and I'm like, oh, 237 scattered properties and all the calls that we have throughout the city for equity, et cetera, et cetera, so I know one thing is that housing, insecure housing and ownership and all the things that come with it is a tool for equity, and I was kinda disappointed that there was no ideas about, oh, can we do anything with this? And no one's like, nope, we're just transferring it, so then come about a week later, Doug Fleming calls and says, basically, I heard you had questions, I can answer any of them, and yes, we've had these equity conversations, and yes, we are in the midst of doing things, and oh yeah, even Mikey23 Foundation is one of the groups that we're looking at doing something for, and not just for the group, but for all of the interest that comes with the group and all the good work they do, so it was just kinda strange that that was my first time hearing that there was something in the makes, but then I find out that it's kinda just like informal, maybe so, maybe not, and I guess I would just question, what if anything is there besides just transferring it, is there any other type of distribution of that property? Are there any plans for any of those parcels, other than switching in name only, because I think that the city has a great opportunity to at least make a small dent in some of the housing issues and just come up with something? I mean, I know I didn't have great ideas besides let's give or turn over or deed over a few of them to first, for example, Mikey23, and let his young men and women work on it and let them do their thing. So I guess my question, if Doug is on, I don't know if he is, is there any agreement on that and, or does anybody have any information? And I would probably, I know it's probably gonna pass anyway, but I'll probably only be voting for something that's just besides pass it over, something that's got like, oh, we could take 10 properties here and do this, two here and do that, and the rest can go to the Housing Commission in name only.
Any other questions? Hey, Councilmember Jackson, I don't think the folks are on this call that can answer that question for you, this was a, mostly a perform a vote at this point because all the conversations had been had earlier, Councilmember Wood, would you like to address it?
I was just wondering if the city attorney could address this, this is, you know, he's very familiar with statute and where that is, so maybe he can address this for Councilmember Jackson.
Also, Councilmember, President Spatafor, it looks like we do have somebody whose hands raised, I think Sam Spatafor works with Doug Fleming, but his hand is raised.
Oh.
Attendees.
Let me pull him in.
As well.
Mr. Spatafor, are you, wait, hold on, Mr. Spatafor, how is audio on? Mr. Spatafor, if you'd like to address this issue, I think Councilmember Spitzley mentioned you worked for.
No, it's actually, it's actually me, Doug Fleming.
Oh, hi.
Sam has the account in our name at Lansing Housing Commission, so.
Hi Doug, you can answer the question.
Yes, I can. Well, I think Carol, Councilwoman Wood said it best, these are not city properties, so I understand what Councilman Jackson's talking about, but HUD is not gonna allow the city to hang on to properties that they don't own. Again, this is in name only. The second part of his question, as it relates to the sale, and it's not concrete, is that the Section 18 process that we have to go through to dispose of the houses, and this also affects the amps as well, that we're going through RAC. We need to have the deeds in our name in order to make the $60 million of investment that we're about ready to make in the City of Lansing. We can't do that without the title to the properties that we're going to be transferring to the third party LDLHP, which is a standard designation for a tax credit deal, if we don't have the name. And as Councilwoman Wood stated previously, because of the city, we were unable to own property in our name, so we cleared that up through the whole process earlier this spring, now we're able to own the properties, once we own them, we can transfer them and do the investments that we're talking about doing in them, and as it relates to the scattered homes, the Section 18 process does not allow us to sell the properties until we get approval, so we have to pre-approve with HUD, we have to put together a bid, which we can't do until we have ownership, put together a bid of, here's all the properties that we have available, put them out into the marketplace, work with the groups that we talked about working with, which is the Mikey3 Foundation, the Haven House, Capillary Housing Partnership, we've had discussions with many local groups about housing needs and what their needs are and how we can work with them with the sale of these houses, but we can't do that until we have ownership of the property. So yes, it's a little vague, but it has to be vague because we can't promise to purchase or to sell something that's not in our name. Any real estate transaction requires that, obviously, we have a clean deed or a clear deed, and we won't have that until city council finalizes this process.
Thank you, I know the only question I have is, who's Sam Spatafor, that name sounds familiar, but I don't...
He's a former Lansing Catholic guy, actually, that now lives in...
Well, now, I feel incumbent upon myself then to say to the city attorney, it turns out I have a relative, my dad's cousin's son, that works for the Housing Commission, so I'm declaring a potential conflict, but I don't succeed as one. Small town of Lansing. Mr. Jackson, you have another question?
Yeah, just quickly, with all due respect to Mr. Fleming, I understand that you can't fully make a real estate transaction without ownership, however, I do believe people often arrange to sell something that they haven't bought yet and get it all in place, and then just kind of everything falls in after the first sale before the second sale, and I appreciate the work that is potentially going to be done, it's just, for me, I would just wanted to see things more lined up and more certain, that's all, thanks.
Thank you, seeing no other hands, if the, Sherry, would you please call the roll on the resolution?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-1 for the resolution on the disposition of city property, transfer of properties administered by the Lansing Housing Commission.
All right, the next item is a, setting the public hearing for October 12th at 7:00 PM for the Montgomery Drain District Public Improvement III Assessment Roll. As you all know, we were supposed to receive the roll last week, did not receive, our last meeting did not receive it, we pushed it off this week, given that there is a lot of public interest in this, we decided to set the public hearing for the 12th of October, not the next meeting, so that would give the clerk enough time to mail, even in a slow mail time, that should give them plenty of time to notice that and get that public notice out, and I know that Sherry set up the Zoom already, or at least was going to this afternoon, so folks can get ready to participate in that public hearing process. So, Mr. Vice President, if you would make the motion, please.
Sorry, I was just trying to unmute myself, so moved, sorry.
Resolution has been moved to set the public hearing for October 12th for the Public Improvement Number Three for the Montgomery Drain District project, I saw Councilmember Spitzley first, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, you know, just, just hearing, you know, a couple comments that we did during public comment, I know this really isn't our responsibility, but it just seems to still be just a lack of information about the fact that this is, you know, what's going on. I really would hope that we could impress upon the powers that be, the Drain Commissioner or whomever is doing this, that we need to do a better job of outreach, so that's all I'm asking, is that as we come up to the public hearing, what, what type of additional information or outreach are we gonna be doing? Thank you.
Sure, and I'm willing to say also here that if the neighborhood wants me to come to a socially distanced meeting in, at one of the parks in that area, I'm happy to do that with the ward rep and see if we can bring along with us the Director of Public Service, if that needs to be done as well, I'm happy to do that, please just let me know, I know, Mr. Decker, I know you've got my phone number, so please feel free to reach out on that, if you want to pull that together with your neighborhood as well, but that's, the public hearing is not the only opportunity for public input that should be available, I agree, Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, a couple of things, first of all, I would recommend, actually, that you, as president and the ward council member, and Andy Kilpatrick set up maybe one or two neighborhood meetings out there to go over this. Before setting the public hearing, I was hoping that we could have Mr. Kilpatrick or a representative of the Public Service Committee explain how they came up with the Montgomery Drain assessed assessment figures, and so that when the public looks at these, the roll, they'll have a better idea of what that is. Second of all, where on our website, in a clear, easy, let's not go through the packets and everything else, a clear, easy place that we can have the assessment roll so that the public can take a look at them, is another question that I have on that, and then lastly, for the city attorney, we went through so much with the bolt decision on surfaces and, you know, how that was determined, and I realize the Drain District has their own state statutes and things like that, but I just want to make sure that we're not running afoul with making determinations on pervious and impervious areas that could result in looking at some of the decisions that were made with the bolt, and I realize that had to do with whether it was a tax or fee, but there were questions that were, that did arise from that on, on how the calculations were done.
The bolt decision dealt with a user fee issue and it came up with a three-pronged test for determining whether something was a fee, and if it's not a fee, it's gonna be a tax. This is an entirely different procedure, it's a special assessment, so there's a procedure in the charter and also in the ordinance. After the roll is confirmed, there is the right of appeal within 60 days, there's also an obligation on the city attorney in the charter to review the roll, and if there are any city attorney, advisor, or either, is it in sync with the special benefit, then the city attorney can advise the council, and council can revise the roll, so there are these protections. There's also a public hearing that is going to be held, so there is a difference between both, although the principles are basically the same.
Mr. Kilpatrick, are you available to walk through the methodology that you shared this afternoon?
Certainly, I can go as detailed as you want, but I think to, to start with, basically the methodology that we are proposing to use is the same as the Drain Commission used to set the proportion... the Drain Commission used to set the apportionment for for the city. So basically what we're doing, and thanks for putting that up on the screen, looking at the the acreage within the district. So we have some parcels at the north end that are not completely within the district. So we're only looking at the acreage that's within the Montgomery Drain District. And then we are basically using a factor for the runoff depending on the type of land use. You see multiple factors for residential properties and that was essentially in consideration for the fact that when you have a larger sized lot, that does not mean you have more impervious surface. So essentially, as as you get a larger lot, the factor goes down. And then there's the same factor for the high-density multifamily residential and the commercial. There was, you know, a comment made that, well, it's, you know, 99% impervious. But if you actually even look at for for roads and roofs, most of them don't go beyond about 90 or 95% because there is some rainwater, especially on those flat roofs, when it falls there, it sits and doesn't drain completely away. It evaporates. So it's never going to be 100% of that that water is getting to the drain. So that's where, you know, a general, we're going from about 28% for, well, 0.25 is for a half acre lot. So about 25% of that water makes it to the to the drain and 90% for the commercial. And that was the 90% is the same factor that was used when looking at the overall apportionment to the city for for all those properties. That is consistent and it's really consistent with what is sort of kind of a standard. There was there was talk about, you know, higher slopes and there's different soil types. And really, it depends on if we want to do an assessment of every single parcel and do an engineering study, then we could do that. That would probably add, I would guess, another $30,000 to to do a study to then look at how close we're going to get. And it maybe is more, you know, more time and effort than makes sense to do on this. There are also several adjustment factors. So with what came from the drain, they took the acreage of any of the parcels that put their property towards low impact development, essentially rain gardens. They excluded that from the calculation, basically saying that they are taking more rainwater, taking care of more rainwater that is generated by the site. Then also, there are several developments in this area that had to put their own detention facilities in as part of approval process for the development. So Skyview, that had has underground detention and storage that was put in there. Same thing with Midtown Apartments. And then with the Red Cedar Development, there's a pond that the Red Cedar Development is constructing to take care of some of its own stormwater. So those sites were given a 10% credit. And then essentially what you do is you look at the equivalent acreage, equivalent runoff acreage for those parcels versus what it is for the entire district. You add them all up and that percentage of each individual parcel, that's what you multiply the title, the entire assessed portion to to come up with an individual parcel. So I can, you know, answer questions and we can, I guess, go back and forth and debate whether it would make sense for us to do an assessment of every single parcel. But I actually took some spot parcels up in the Frandora Hills area, some larger, some smaller, and looked at actual roof area, driveway area, and applied the appropriate factors. And I came up with anywhere between 0.28 and 0.3, assuming most of them are flat because obviously the steeper a site is, the more runs off into the street. And if you have a clay soil type versus a sand soil type, you have different percent runoff, but it just really depends on to what extent we want to get to to calculate these. And you may change the value, maybe $100 on the residential parcels. It may be a couple thousand dollars on the commercial properties, but it would be, you know, more work to go through and do that and more than we've, I think, ever done for any assessment in the past.
Mr. Kilpatrick, I have some questions. I see councilmember Wood, I see your questions too. I see your hand rather, excuse me. Do you have an average, like, what the average homeowner and the average commercial resident? I guess I could run the numbers on the spreadsheet, but you do know that off the top of your head or is someone in finance or treasury, no?
I don't off the top of my head. I want to say the residential is in the like $6,000 to $7,000 range and
For 30 years, right?
For 30 years total. And on the commercial side, you're going to have a much higher both both, you know, cost and range because they they range from, you know, a low, I'm just looking at it right now of, you know, I see some that are down in the no
Yeah, there's there's one
50,000, you know, versus the, you know, Frandor proper, you know, 2.7 million. So there's there's a much greater variation on the commercial side than there is in the residential side. The residential side for those properties that are 100% in the district, the low there is around 5,000 to 6,000 and the high is a little over $10,000 based on the size of the parcel. So I could I could easily run run that calculation. I will point out one thing that I did not put in the assessment methodology. There is one parcel that's owned by the Board of Water and Light. It's a vacant parcel. And that is, the factor there is is based on a like meadow with, I think, is 2%, 2% to 6% slope on that. So that's kind of an outlier that's not in the table just because it's a single parcel.
Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. My question would be, Andy, to you. Is this from property line to property line or does it encompass the street in front of the residence or commercial area?
This is just the parcel. So basically, what we did is we took the acreage of the parcel from tax records and that's what all this is based on.
Okay.
If there there are some areas on Stonewood at the very north end that there is only a fraction in the district. And with that, we use the numbers that came from Ingham County Drain Commission for the number of acres that are in the district.
Okay. And and because we're doing the assessment, I think this is where it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we're out giving the information to the public. The the project is the Drain Commissioners Project, but we're making the determination on the assessment and what the taxpayers will have to pay. So that's why I think it's important for us to be the messenger in this case.
That is correct. And we will on our our website, on the Public Service Department, we're having a page specifically for Montgomery Drain. We will put as much information as we can. However, specifics on the project itself, we would refer to the Drain Office for that information.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, is it? Sorry, go ahead, Carol. My apologies.
And no, that answered all my questions. Thank you.
Andy, is it possible? I mean, I'm happy to run those numbers myself, but I can't do it on a PDF in the packet. Is it possible to get the spreadsheet or could you have those numbers for us before we we take this up at council this evening?
Yeah, I mean, I can actually, you know, calculate them right now as we're we're going through this, so you'll have those numbers.
All right, we'll bring you back down to other or in the committee, in the council meeting. So the speed at which you handle this depends on whether you have to stick around till seven, so.
Oh, I will handle it much before that.
Okay.
It'll be like five minutes.
Very good. We'll come back to that then. Folks, why don't we wait on voting on this until Andy's made those calculations just so we can do it? So someone smarter than me, is it, do we need to table this or? Adam, why don't you withdraw your your motion?
I will. Yep, I was getting ready on you. I will withdraw the motion for this for the
All right, we'll come back to this one. So the next one is the Resolution for the Annual Action Plan, a substantial amendment, the Second Allocation of CARES Act Funds for Emergency Solutions Grant CV2. This is related to the coronavirus funds. Mr. Vice President, if you'd like to make the motion, then we'll have somebody explain it.
Sure, sorry. I would move, I'm sorry, I would move the Annual Action Plan substantial amendment. This is the Second Allocation of CARES Act Funds for Emergency Solution Grant.
Very good. Miss Mrs. Harkins, is there someone, oh, Kim, Director Coleman, I believe you're here to address that one.
I believe Don Kohanik is here also and Doris Witherspoon.
Oh, okay. So whoever wants to address it?
Okay, I'll start. This is Don Kohanik, Development Director from EDP. And I think on the phone, we also have Kim, who just spoke, Director of HRCS and Doris Witherspoon, Senior Planner from EDP. And you recall, we've we've been here before on CARES Act Funds in the last few months. There was the first round of CARES Act Funds, which included a CDVG component as well as an ESG component. And this is the second round of CARES Act Funds, which is focused just on ESG. So all we have in front of council today is approval of a substantial amendment to provide for that that additional ESG funding. We're following the same process you've seen before, the same process we followed in that first round with the CDVG and ESG. The additional funding is huge. Is $1,282,028. That's roughly double what the first round was and many times more than our usual annual ESG allocation. And of course, all COVID-related ESG funds has to be spent to address and to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. ESG, as you know, is primarily focused on homelessness prevention as well as the homeless. And and once again, all we're asking for is approval of this substantial amendment, the resolution you have in front of you. You may have some specific questions and I think, you know, with regards to the how the ESG is going to be spent. And I think Katrina and Kim are on the line and they might be able to give you more detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did see that Katrina's hand was raised. So Katrina, if you'd like to unmute yourself, please feel free to do so. There you are. Is there anything you want to add, Katrina?
I think she's muted.
Well, show she's unmuted, but let me. Perhaps she's having mic issues. Director Coleman, is there anything or Dor?
Sure. Can you hold one second? She's going to join me in my office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. He said she's running.
Hi, this is Katrina Arista. I'm sorry about these technical problems. I just wanted to let you know that I was available in case you had any questions about numbers or what the plans were.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions? I see councilmember Wood, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Can you address whether these funds that we're going to be getting, is this to reimburse the city of expenditures that we've already spent dollars on or are these new dollars? And what is the timeline? If these are new dollars, what is the timeline to have them spent by?
Thank you. That's a great question. They are not new dollars. I'm sorry, they are new dollars and the timeline to spend them is March 1st through September of 2022. And although funds have been spent by agencies, the city has not reimbursed those agencies yet.
Can these funds be used to reimburse those agencies if they submit for those?
Yes, as long as they are eligible under HUD's guidelines and regulations, those funds can be reimbursed to the agencies.
Okay, thank you. That answers my questions.
Thank you, councilmember Wood. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, President Spatafor. So Katrina, are these, I I get that they're new funds and thank you for that. So what what entities are there? Are these going to be the entities we already work with to address homelessness? Are we looking at new ones? What's the plan for rollout of these dollars? And you said that it's for, you said that entities that have already expended funds can apply for these funds for reimbursement? Is there a limit or what's what's the process to do that?
Thank you, councilmember Spitzley. We, the Continuum of Care, which is a group of human service agencies, did present an open application process for agencies to apply for the funding. And part of that was so that folks or agencies could understand exactly what HUD would reimburse. We did have a few agencies, there are four, and these are agencies that already provide human services in our community. And they did did an application process to let the city and the community know just what they could help with in regards to the COVID response in our community to mitigate the risk to homeless and those at risk. And through that application process, we worked out a strategic plan how we could help use the CDC guidelines to help mitigate the spread of COVID in our homeless community. So through that process, we are, we were able to look at the funding and how we could best use those funds effectively just in the shelters, but also to house folks as rapidly as possible. But there have been quite a few barriers with that. So the next thing we want and we have been working on is to help citizens not, so they won't be evicted from their properties. So that's been one of our huge, a big, huge efforts that's been going forth among human service agencies that we already work with.
Thank you very much, councilmember Spitzley. I don't see other hands. So with that, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the Resolution for the Annual Action Plan with our substantial amendment for the Second Allocation of CARES Act Funds for the Emergency Solutions Grant.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you all who presented on this one. We're going to skip the budget priorities. We'll we'll finish out our business on the public hearing for Montgomery Drain.
President?
Oh.
This is Doris Witherspoon. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I can, yes.
Will we need to be present at the seven o'clock meeting?
No, they will not.
No, they will not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next one, Mr. Vice President, if you could. Mr. Kilpatrick, are you set with the numbers that we requested?
I am somehow. I don't see my little chat function in the bottom here, but in computing, and I'll make a distinction, the residential is the residential that does not have parking lots. So it is a single-family residential and duplexes, not the apartments that have parking lots. So that amount is, I mean, Peter, I texted you, but it's actually $6,681 for the residential. And the commercial is $243,445.
Okay. Thank you. And we do have the chat function disabled so that city council members can't sidebar with each other.
Okay, thank you. That's why.
Yes. That's a recommendation from the city attorney's office, so we did that. Mr. Vice President, if you'd like to call back this, the motion?
Sure, I would move the resolution to set the public hearing. This will be for October 12th, 7:00 PM via Zoom for the Montgomery Drain District.
All right, and I will, hopefully someone from Frandora Hills is still listening. If they could reach out to me and schedule a sit down and I will see if I can drag along with me, Mr. Kilpatrick. Get him out of the office.
I'd love to attend. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yeah, she's got a thumbs up.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero to set the public hearing for the Montgomery Drain Special Assessment Roll for October 12th.
Very good. And the final, the grant that we're going to talk about before we move into the city clerk's presentation is a grant acceptance for an election equipment upgrade grant. Folks, just so you're aware, I did, we got this late last, not late last week, we got it in time for this week's agenda. So I don't want to imply that there was a lateness to it, but there's an urgency to it. So we are approving it this evening, even though it has not yet been formally referred to us. So the plan is to approve it at council this evening, so the clerk can get to work on spending those dollars for the election, which is coming up. So, Mr. Clerk, would you like to talk quickly about the election grant, so we can approve it and then move on to your presentation?
Well, I kind of rolled the description of the election grant into my presentation, so.
All right, well, let's start your presentation then, and we'll come back to the grant.
Okay, sounds great. And does Brian have screen?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so Brian, we're ready to go. Okay.
And folks, as with all these presentations, it's easier if we just hold until the end for questions, because I can't see all of you when the screen is up.
Brian, we just see that you've started screen sharing and don't see the presentation.
Suspense is killing me. There we go.
There we go.
Oh, good, pictures of Chris Swope.
Okay. So we are looking forward to this election year. We are going to have a safe, secure, accurate election, and you can count on it. Go ahead. In order to be able to vote, you just simply need to be a U.S. citizen, be 18 by Election Day. You can register ahead of time. You can even cast your absentee ballot ahead of time, even if you're turning 18 on Election Day. And a resident of the city for 30 days before you vote. The, those who are released from prison are eligible to vote upon release in Michigan. But you cannot, the only time you really can't vote is when you're in jail or prison serving your sentence. You can vote while you're waiting arraignment or trial or sentencing. So before and after. But Proposal three brought a great number of voter registration changes to the Michigan election law that voters should be aware of. They can register in any of the normal ways up through the 15th day before Election Day, including the Secretary of State branch offices, if you can get an appointment. You can also now register online at michigan.gov/vote. And starting 14 days before, you can register only in the city clerk's office. And that is up through 8:00 PM Election Day. So there's no deadline other than Election Day to register to vote now. If you are registering in that last two-week period, you do have to bring proof of residency. It doesn't have to prove that you've lived in the city for 30 days, just that you currently live in the city. And that can be electronic proof. So we've had a lot of the people that are taking advantage of this are younger voters, and many of them are bringing things like a utility bill on their smartphone. And that goes up through Election Day. And when registering, we have the absentee ballots. At that point, you can register and vote at the same time. Okay? And this just repeats some of that, so I won't, oh, sorry, this is highlighting the website, sorry. Michigan.gov/vote is a very powerful tool. You can register to vote up to that 14-day deadline. You can submit an application to vote at home, and then we will mail your ballot to you. And you can use that to confirm your absentee voting status if we've mailed you a ballot or not, or preview your ballot. Okay? Getting a little bit into the grant, one of the things that the grant funded was publicity. So we will be having billboards throughout the city encouraging folks to vote. So this is a sample of it. Okay?
And there are three ways of voting, that's the key.
Right, yeah. You can vote at home, vote early, or vote November 3rd. So you can request a ballot to be mailed to your house, or you can request, you can come in person to my office, either location, or eventually there'll be three for this election, I'll get to that shortly. Or you can vote at your regular polling place on November 3rd. Okay? And then this is just some other specific information about how and where to get an absentee ballot application and all of your in-person choices for voting at home and in-person. Okay? Another part of the grant, we will, we currently have two drop boxes in the city. We will have one that is provided by the Bureau of Elections, and then we will have another 12 that are provided by this grant. Installation is also being, is part of the grant. So most residents will be within a mile and a half of a drop box. They will be at the four community centers, all six of our fire stations. And then when we place those, we found the southeast part of the city was lacking. So we are also going to have one at the Mount Hope Cemetery Office, as well as the CADA main offices on Trantor Road. And we will be putting up cameras for most of these sites that don't have a 24-hour presence at them. And then we will also have one, and this last one is the one that will not be available 24 hours a day. One of them will be inside of the CADA Transportation Center downtown to accommodate those bus travelers. Okay? This just goes through our hours. We will be, for the first time ever, opening a satellite location. We will be, for the first time, having a third location, a satellite office, for the last two weeks at the South Side, the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. And the staffing for that is also funded by the grant. So, and we will be doing, every Saturday in October, we'll be open from 10:00 to 2:00. And then on the last weekend, we will be open 12 hours, both Saturday and Sunday, so 24 hours of voting fun on Halloween and November 1st. Okay? And by the way, we are planning an event for Halloween, so we don't have all the details, so I will talk about that at a later time. Oh, I guess there's a little bit about it there. We're, it's a trunk-or-treat, and we're going to have a lot of community groups be part of it. It will be in the parking lot, so it will be safely socially distanced. But that's a good opportunity for people to drop off their ballot, or pick one up if they haven't yet. Okay? We are mailing an application to every registered voter, again, grant-funded. We already have over 26,000 ballots set to go out next week on the 24th. And all of our precincts will be open with all the safety protocols in place. Okay? Just, the executive order said that we could not require voters to wear a mask. We do highly encourage it as for their safety, as well as our election workers. We will have free masks available. We will ask voters to wear them, but not require it. And we will have them use the same pen throughout their voting experience, so we're reducing the amount of things that are touched by multiple people. Okay? All right, so this gets into the specifics of the grant. We will be getting, from that grant, it's 444,000 almost. The biggest chunk will be equipment. That includes high-speed tabulators to count the absentee ballots, of which there will be many. It includes the drop boxes and various other things that will be of long-term benefit to the city of Lansing. Shorter-term benefit, the human resources portion, it is allowing us to have extra additional staff to deal with the volume of absentee ballots that we will have, and overtime for our existing staff, so that we can have those extra days, those extra Saturdays. And it also is allowing us, because our election workers are on the front line, it is allowing us to have a hazard pay for the election workers. And then we have printing and mailing outreach to the voters. So that's the billboards and other media items that we will be doing to help encourage and inform and educate our voters about their rights. And then some facilities improvements for our office. Okay? We do anticipate that there will be an audit of this election. We were a pilot site on that, and I've talked to the council about that before. But we do expect that to continue, and we'll be participating with that. Okay? We're getting close to the end, folks. We are always looking for more precinct workers, election inspectors. It is a paid position. Our lowest paid is $12 an hour. We especially need computer skills, and you do have to be registered to vote if you're 18, if you're, but you can also work if you're 16 or 17, and we do have a sign-up right on the main city clerk page. Or if you want to work for another community, you would contact that clerk directly. And that sits, and I am happy to answer any questions and see if you have any, want any more detail particularly about the grant.
We will get you out of here, there we go. Are there questions? I see Councilmember Hussein.
Just very quickly, and I want to make sure I have my notes correct, and I may have missed it, so I apologize. Chris, is there, is there a city match on this, or no?
There is no city match on this, but the grant does stipulate that my office budget not be reduced.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, that takes care of my question. Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, I was monitoring some of the.
I understand.
Did you mention, are you paying for return postage on absentee ballots, or is that something the Secretary of State's doing?
We are paying for return postage, but we will be reimbursed by the state of Michigan for that. So they also, and I should mention, the state is also providing a portion of the funding for the high-speed tabulators, as well as the one drop box, and some allocations for PPE. So we are using state resources as well.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hussein, your hand is up, are you all set, or was that residual?
I'm all set, I'll take.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Yeah, Chris, the fact that you're going to be over at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Center, do you know yet where in that building you're going to be? We realize that, you know, we have some handicap accessible issues with there. You do have that sidewalk, if you're using that community, the Sandy Allen Community Room, there's broken sidewalk there. So can you expound on where you're going to be?
I believe we will actually be in the Park Department office there. They do not anticipate being back to work in the office there. They can accommodate us in what would normally be their space. I have not done a site visit to see what the sidewalk situation is to get to that, so.
Yeah, that one isn't a problem. That one, you should be fine with. And I believe CADA and Spectran wouldn't have any problem with having people with handicap issues, accessibility issues, be able to traverse that.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, thank you. Other questions for the city clerk? I just want to commend you, Mr. Clerk, I know that we're, what you're doing is a hard work right now. I'm sure you do it happily, but I think we're probably one of the most prepared municipalities in the state for this type of election. You've been gearing up for a AV ballot election for several years through your expanded access to absentee voting. So I just want to appreciate, recognize that, and thank you for taking some time to share with us the details.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah, I did shoot my hand back up again, thank you, President Spatafor. One of the things that we've heard in the media is to vote more than once. To vote absentee, and if you're not sure whether your absentee vote got in, go into your polling place and vote on Election Day. Can you address that, please?
Yes, that is definitely illegal, and you should not do that. If you are concerned about your absentee ballot being returned, you, we will have some tracking that we had piloted in the in the primary election. So if you're, as we're sending ballots out, they'll be tracking. And as they're, they come back through the mail, they're tracked. In addition to that, once we receive a ballot electronically into our computer, that means that we verify the signature, and that ballot will be counted. That fact that we've received it is available at michigan.gov/vote. Voters can verify that we have received their ballot. The voter should not attempt to vote twice. And in fact, if you change your mind and got an absentee ballot and decide that you want to vote in person, it is very strongly recommended that you bring that absentee ballot that you don't want to use with you. When you go to the polls, you would surrender it to the poll workers. It will get put in an envelope and not counted, and you can vote on Election Day. So if you're close on time, you can do that. But I can tell you, we will be collecting the drop boxes, all 15 of them, up until 8:00 at night, so on Election Night. So if you're, if you don't feel that there's time for the mail, use that drop box, and we will get your vote counted.
Thank you.
Something tells me you knew the answer to that question, Councilmember Wood. All right, Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President, and I think you kind of answered my question just in your last statement, Mr. Swope. But is there a cutoff time? Because I've heard different people say that, you know, don't trust the mail, you know, if you can drop off your absentee ballot, you know, to your local city clerk's office or county clerk's office. Is there a cutoff time that you would recommend them not use the mail?
I would recommend that if it's a week or less, they definitely not use the mail. And if it's, even if it's 10 days, I would recommend that they should use a drop box instead. But the post office is saying a week. We are seeing most of the mail quicker than that, but you never know when something is going to happen. And if the post office were to just get overwhelmed, so I suggest if you're anywhere closer than a week, that you definitely use a drop box. Voters seem to love the drop boxes, though. I think we get more by drop box now than we do by mail.
And I'm hoping that the drop box is well-secured, because I heard rumors of people going around trying to steal them?
They will be fixed. Some of them were even laying concrete pads. We are also having cameras, security cameras installed, so they will be secure. And they will be checked at least once a day, all the way through the election.
Great, all right, thank you very much.
And then, Mr. Clerk, just for the record for people watching, it's okay to have someone take your ballot in for you? Is that, or is that not okay?
Only if it's someone from your own household or immediate family. A voted ballot cannot be handled by volunteers from an organization. So, you know, you can use a mail carrier. So, you know, you can use a mail carrier, or you could use a common carrier like UPS or FedEx. And we do occasionally get that. Voters sometimes are out of state, and they need to get that ballot back quickly. So we do receive ballots by other common carriers, as well as the postal system. But it's immediate family member, or a deputized clerk assistant, or a household member.
Okay, thank you. I don't see other questions, so I will recognize Vice President Hussein to pass the, make the motion to pass the resolution for the grant acceptance for the election equipment grant.
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could all, if the clerk would please call the roll, we will get this out to council this evening.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero for the grant acceptance of the election equipment.
All right, Mr. Clerk, you'll be there this evening at 7:00, I assume. So if you want, if there's anything else you want to add for the, for the meeting, that's fine, but I don't think we need a presentation again. Okey-dokey. So we are now, okey-dokey? Okay, anyway, we are on to the budget here priorities for fiscal year '22. I know that the committees are diligently working. In fact, all 12 committees that I sit on have been working on the budget priorities, so I'm assuming that others are as well. If there's, if there's some we want to start thinking about tonight, I will put it up to the committee to discuss. Otherwise, we can do it all on the 21st and get back our evening, but I'm certainly not here to stifle the conversation, so. But seeing no hands, I'm prepared to stifle the conversation and say that at 6:14, there is no further business before this committee, so we are adjourned until 7:00 PM.